We're going to go ahead and get started. We're going to go to roll call. Commissioner Yauer?
Here.
Commissioner Rosales?
Here.
Judge Shaw's here. Commissioner Dugan?
Here.
Commissioner Shindel?
Here.
Please stand and join us.
Number four, we ask that you be with us today as we consider this as a county. We thank you for all our blessings. We ask that you keep people safe on Lawrence County as you knew the number of those injured, killed in this last week. Do you stand to pray?
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number five, citizens, we heard regarding specific agenda items. General, not a good specific agenda item we heard at the county business.
Ms. Hall, is yours for the end?
Yes.
Okay. And then my hiring?
Already?
Yes.
Judge, Commissioner, first of all, I'm Mike Tyburn. Hi, I'm in Aron. I love the North Park, now I'm calling for the County of Mobile. I make some nice notes about my glasses, so I'll have to bring it.
Is mine? They are?
I don't know. I have been much prominent for over 20 years. But newer states, these counties, they have seen a secret read by counties to prioritize EMS. My opinion on this is that it fails. Because any one of these counties has gone back to either renewing contracts with other agencies on a yearly, bi-yearly basis and got also in trouble because of contract negotiations. Private business is driven by census, car volume, whereas county counties is driven by volume and that's by serving the community. Private business has to have a bottom line. If you do not have the car volume, they will have to, you have to make, and there is a business that should be for business. EMS to serve a county shouldn't be a business. We should take care of people. Regardless of how high your multi-car volume is, your annual car volume, we have to take care of patients. Private business costs a fortune. I kind of have an idea of what it runs at for one unit per year and if, again, I let you spend your money, but you take part of this, less than fraction, the best you want to currently have, the town's going to be less. I think it would save the community a lot of money, a lot of grief. Because one thing that, when you lose this control, you don't control, please, I like to, I don't like to give that up. I don't know what you guys feel about that. But you have a company that can do whatever you put in contract, well, not do, but don't have to do. You will lose local medical direction. You may have a medical director who has no idea where you look. This may be out of San Antonio, maybe a corpus, or maybe out of some other state. With our hospital, we've made some incredible changes to try to move forward. We're now doing teleneurology, we're doing telemedicine. They change really quickly, so we need EMS to change with us. Because maybe to see patients change. This is not the 1970s, the patient in the back of the, the facial bag and go, go. It's kind of less. Or when you face in a condition, it will help us, we expect to, to help us increase liability, increase life expectancy. And it starts with EMS, it starts with the medicine.
Mr. Tyburn, that's three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
Good finish up? Thank you.
Do you want to finish with your name?
I want to hear it. We've got to make a vote on how to do it.
We're not dealing with medical conflict today. The biggest issue is-
I'm sorry, wait a minute. We've got to make a vote. I'll make a motion, finish hearing what you've got to say, we have just within two minutes.
All right, say it. Go ahead.
What you come to floor is that you realize that all the time that these long cases have been asked for, for years, should not be in vain. Just because of area, an error of our previous legislation has come to them, doesn't mean that this should be then a county EMS. We should be less ask from the beginning, let's start moving forward. Spend your money wisely, spend in EMS, our EMS.
Thank you, Mike.
Time flies, Mike.
Appreciate it.
We need to do a little bit of skipping. I'm almost got to get some kind of, so let's move to number 28. We're going to go back to some of the EMS stuff that are all the same case, the same. Kurt, do you want to go ahead and do your presentation for what you have? Number 28 is Presentation Discussion of Inco Software by Kirk Penningham, the Child Technologies for the Clotus County District.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
No problem.
I've got about five minutes of information, then I'll open up the questions, go for it. That's all, all right?
Yes.
Okay. First off, I want, I'm Kirk Penningham, Territory Sales Rep for Tider Technologies, Local Government Division, that's based in Love of Texas. And the first thing I want to do is thank y'all very much for your business. I'm here today to talk about the financial software that the auditor and the treasurer's office uses. We did a demonstration for them on June 6th and showed them the software that we're going to discuss here in just a minute. But first off, we very much appreciate your business. Y'all have been a customer since 1997 and we value your business. And what I want to talk about today is just explain why their software needs to be upgraded and, and, you know, I know it's not a, not a cheap proposition, but I want to explain so y'all have a better understanding of what we're talking about. Real briefly, the software that y'all have was bought from a company called the Software Group in 1997, as I mentioned. And in 1998, that company and the company that I represent, Inco, in Love of, they merged to form Tider Technologies. So at that point, that's where Tider became an entity. And it is now the largest public sector software provider in the country. We have customers in all 50 states, over 2,000, I mean, over 10,000 customers, so forth and so on. We value every customer, as I mentioned, and Karnes County is a customer that we very much appreciate and want to keep. When that merger happened, the Software Group did not have a Windows-based financial product that we already did, so there was no need for them to duplicate, spend the $5 to $10 million that it cost to develop that. And so hence, today, we're talking about the product that they have upgrading it to the Inco product. The product that, that they have today was written in the 80s and 90s. It really has not been enhanced much since about 2003, 2004. There's only 12 customers left in Texas that are using it. It will, it will go away and be retired in a few years. And so what we're talking about is moving to a new product, the Inco Version 10 Financial Product, which is five years old. We, Inco currently has software in 50 Texas counties, the financial software, 15 of those counties are running the product, we're going to talk about that. Let's get down to specifics real quick and just give you an idea of what it's going to do for the county that y'all aren't able to do now. One thing that the product does is it has a Google-level search. I mean, I'm sure everybody's familiar with Google and looking stuff up like that. This will do that in a software across all applications. So if you're looking for a John Smith, you're looking for a bigger dollar amount, you're looking for things, the search and query capability is tremendous. The drill down to source data, what that means is instead of, a vendor calls in and says, hey, how do you get paid for my invoice 121? And instead of having to get up, go pull a file, go look in there, see if the check's clear, and so forth, so on, you've got that information at your fingertips. Three clicks and you can check and get into the bank reconciliation area and find out if the bank check is clear. And so it saves time. It reduces manual and duplicate entry of data, so that reduces mistakes and also saves time. One of the really things is that you have real-time data on demand. So therefore, sometimes when you need to ask for information, it may be that afternoon or maybe the next day before they're able to get the data together for you and give you that information. This gives you access to real-time data and can give you a report immediately or in just a few hours that sometimes takes a day or two. That, you know, along that line, you have easy access to age reports as well. This holds your, your information from, you know, previous years and it gives you opportunity to add. We're proposing a true HRIS system, which in today's world with employees, you cannot be careful enough, I mean, cities, counties, private business can get in trouble doing things incorrectly with employees. This gives you a human resource information system that is, of course, keeps you in compliance with all Department of Labor requirements and that sort of thing. One thing that also this has is an employee self-service module. Through a web portal, employees can access information about their, they can look up pay history, they can look up vacation time, they can look up information, make sure their addresses in there and everything correctly like that. So it gives employees the ability to access data that for, right now, they would have to call either the auditor or the treasurer's office to, to access. Let me move through this a little quicker. There's a user-friendly dashboard on this. The front end on this thing can be customized to where each employee can have the information that they need to have, which that leads to what we call lights-out processing. This system gives you capability overnight to produce reports. And so therefore, you can have, you can come in at 8:00 in the morning and you have a delivery folder that has reports in there. They're already run and you can even schedule those reports to be sent to Commissioner's Court. If you want to have a report sent on Monday morning every week at 8:00 or 8:30, you can email the rest, it can be set up to automatically do that. Without being into too, too much detail and let y'all ask some questions. Basically, the, the situation is this, that the product that y'all have now is a, is a 20th century product and what we're proposing is a 21st century upgrade. This would bring the software and the capabilities that I've just run through with, there's many others and I'm not going to sit here and bore y'all with this, all the different features and everything. But it just gives the auditor and the treasurer's office much more capability with features and functionality. The thing that's going on, as I mentioned, we have 12 counties that are on the software that you have right now. And it is not scheduled for sunset yet, but Tyler will at some point decide that they're going to have to, have to turn that product off. And the 12 counties that we have left, I'm talking to five of those this summer that are looking to move into the Inco Version 10 product. So if that happens, we're left with seven. Oh, support is another thing, real quick. The guy that came and did the demo for, for the offices is a guy named Jeff McMann, wonderful guy. He, he knows this product that you have inside and out better than anyone, but he's the only guy for support. And so if he's on vacation or whatever, maybe some help with something, it's not available. The support that we have in our office in Love of, that has 150 people in it, 16 of those people are dedicated solely to the Inco Version 10 product. And so we, Jeff McMann is one of those people. He's, he supports this Version 10 product as well. That's basically what I have. We're proposing, there's a couple of different methods and this makes us no difference how you do it. There are a couple of different ways to deliver the software. The traditional setup, which y'all, like y'all have now, is where you have a server and you post that server here in the county and you're responsible for backing it up and taking care of the data. And when that server wears out in three, four years, spending the $8, $10,000 to replace it. We're also proposing what we call a subscription or a software as a service model, which that is where we host the data for the county at our location in Dallas, a secure location in Dallas, and you access it over the internet. And then that location is backed up with three redundant generations, electric, electric generation systems. So if that, if you went out or whatever, you have, still have access to your data and the data is backed up again at another location we have in Maine. I'm making both proposals. It's a whole lot more cost effective through this subscription plan, but that's, that's a county decision.
Do you have like a party sheet or anything like that?
I have, thank you. This is just a, and this, I love the high school and college football, so I hope y'all find, I can make this kind of flip chart style, so it kind of just flips. This is just an information sheet about Tyler Technologies and about the software that we're talking about. And I will leave that to y'all. As far as the numbers and the proposal and all that stuff, I've given that to the auditor and she has all of that information. And so, I mean, I can discuss that today, I don't know if y'all have that, but that the auditor has that information. Let me take the bread to let y'all ask a question.
Training.
I'm sorry?
Training.
Training, okay, that's a very good question. This package that we're proposing has 372 hours of training on the software. And that is estimated. In the contract, it says those hours are estimated. And so what that means is, and that leads to a couple of things. Part of what we include in this, in this package is called, a product called Tyler Community. Tyler Community is a user-based, kind of a, it's like, it's like a listserv, y'all have Commissioner's listservs and that kind of thing. It's like a listserv, I hate to say Facebook, but it's kind of like that. But it's where we have Inco users from all over the country that share information on that, on that place. So it's a great place to get information. Part of that is the Tyler Online Training Center. And Tyler Online Training Center is a learning management system where, and these are things y'all don't have right now, where the, the offices can go and they can access data and there's all kinds of tutorials and training and webinars and things like that. And why I'm going to that is because the 372 hours that we have proposed in this package are onsite and there's cost involved in it. I mean, there's going to be a cost involved for the trainer to be here. And we encourage the, the county employees to look at that Tyler Online Training Center upfront so they can get familiar with the software and so forth. And if, if they do a good job of doing that, we found that you can save hours and maybe if we only use 300 hours of the training, then that's all you would be charged for.
Also, I understand this, this type of product, the HRIS system, or has a capability of time clock?
It does. In fact, we've got a time clock import system in here to, to import. There's a couple of ways to do that. We offer a time management system called Time Attendance. But then we also have an interface to where you can go to a third party, which we work with a lot. There's one in San Angelo called Time Clock Plus. There's one in Tulsa called Executive Time. Of course, there's Chronos, that's the biggest one. But yeah, this does have a time and a couple of ways to skin that cap.
And is, can you access this thing offsite?
Absolutely. And with, well, either way you can. It's a little easier with the subscription plan, but you can access that from any, any location. I mean, if somebody has a sick child and they're at home, sorry, you don't get out of work, you can access it through your home computer. And that brings us to a point about bandwidth. We need a business-level, you know, VSL or a cable internet system set up. And of course, any entity, any business or county that has employees that are listening to radio or watching a bunch of YouTube stuff and things like that, eat up a bunch of bandwidth, it can, it can slow down your, your access to data. But we have, we test the internet connectivity. And so where I'm going with that is if you did work from home, it may be a little bit slower than it is in your commercial environment.
Do you have, Mr. Clark, do you have, have Tyler in here? I mean, the, Mr. Clark, does she have Tyler?
She's back here, so.
But I don't know, but y'all don't have?
No, it's no country.
No country. I guess so, like if, guess what I'm asking, if, say, the one that needed, it gets something from Duane, she could email over the, over your pick?
Sheriff's offices on Hill.
Yeah, we can, we can set up interfaces, we can set up interfaces with software, pull
in certain data. The, the financial software in any county, you really want it to be autonomous. I mean, you really don't want a bunch of people in it and a bunch of people not getting with it. So it's designed to be very secure. There are very secure rights and roles in the software to where each person that, for example, if somebody, all they do is, is they do AP, then that's the only login they're going to be able to get into, to get into AP and so forth. They won't be able to get into payroll and that sort of thing. But yes, there's some interfaces that can be-
But it's very secure.
Absolutely, it is extremely secure. This, this Version 10 product that's just been out for about five years is just amazing. It's granular level security. You can get down to CAD level and, and even to certain funds that someone can look at.
So I guess my question still is like, this specific software that you're proposing, what is the total overall cost that would be for the county?
Okay. Under the subscription plan, the plan that would be where we would host your data, and this, let me find one, because let me just change that. We, as we discussed yesterday, LaWanna, you would not want project accounting portion in there? Okay. And I did not make that change before I left my office, but I made some notes of it yesterday. The cost right now would be, according to what we've discussed, would be, this is built in two different ways. We break out the professional services and upfront costs and you pay that as those are incurred. So example, the hours that we come in and we train, it'll be over three, four, five weeks that we come in and train, and those are billed as incurred. Right now, that figure is, the way we have designed, $69,218. $69,218.
That includes converting from ABLE term?
Yes, that does include that. That includes data conversion. And we, and we have discounted this. I want to, I want to point something out about this. We have discounted because y'all are a Tyler customer. We discounted the license fees 20% and we have discounted the data conversion 35% because we have already moved 26 counties from the software that y'all have to Inco. So we've got some, some experience with it.
So the total cost for the Inco package with conversion, that's just a, a tricky job, is $69,218?
That's the services.
For the services?
Right, let me explain the next part. So that includes the training hours, that includes project management and some extra follow-up training, and then the data conversion. And I'll leave you a copy of this, I've got one for you.
Thank you.
And then, so that's $69,218. Now, that figure's not going to be on the one I'm going to leave you because the project accounting is still in here. I'll revise that.
Okay.
And then you have an annual fee. Your annual fee would be $24,151. And the annual fee is guaranteed for five years. That's one of the new things we have done in this plan, is that for the next five years, that $24,151 will not increase. So each year when y'all go into the budgeting process, you will know exactly what your cost is going to be for, for financial software.
And that annual fee includes the support?
It includes support and includes, and it lets you pay out the license fees over those five years. And to give you just a quick example, or a, where did I write that down? Tyler, because it is becoming so expensive for us to support the, the current software that you have, have, has started a 9% increase annually on that, on the license fees, which you're probably well aware of. And I'm sorry, I can't find that figure, but right now, your current, your current maintenance on your financial software is about $9,000. So we're talking about a little bit of increase on the annual maintenance fee, but it's going to stay constant for five years and it's going to bring a whole lot more functionality to the, to the county.
So now the software itself, for both the treasurer and the auditor, would be how much?
These are, that's the figures I'm quoting.
Okay. So the professional services, that's the software included?
Mm-hmm.
So it's $69,000, but that's both of them?
That's, that's for all the five users, that would be for five users in the auditor and the treasurer's office. And they are named users. I mean, under this plan, they have to be, you know, they have to log in under their name and that, that's the only person that's going to log in on it.
And this includes, if you look on the handout he gave you, this includes the modules of general ledger, budgeting, bank reconciliation, accounts payable, payroll, human resources, and fixed assets, correct?
And again, the, the, this quote I'm going to leave you here has, has project accounting in here, but I will remove that and make that correction up for you and send that back.
You want to use part of it if you didn't want, or we all talked about that you have to take out, or if I misunderstood?
Project accounting, for like if we were doing a construction project that we wanted to track exclusively, for instance, the new jail, we've got the rain to do that tracking for us and it won't be a continual thing, so I didn't think that module was needed.
I'm just really excited basically about the payroll part of this, especially with the HR part, because right now we didn't already direct deposit and eventually I hope we do that a mandatory direct deposit and they'll be able to go online once they set up their own account and get a copy of their current payroll check with us out, how to mail them their direct deposit slip or send it to their, their departments. Also, we have not a lot, but occasionally we have people wanting their last three paychecks because they're trying to purchase something and they don't keep copies of it, so I'll have to take time out of my day to do that. So we're, and also with the time clock plus, we've been talking with them. And that was something we'll do on the capital outlay budget hearing or part that is being able to cut down on how much time we spend on payroll. Because right now, my Todd's ticking because I need to get it in the bank today by 5:00 and I'm having to sit here this morning to do a meeting, so.
By, is this the same thing, like you sent us the email, I know you said Shelby and I want to, that type of time clock?
Yes, yes.
Is this the same one that you were wanting?
Yes, that's the time clock plus, that's the one. It's separate pay from what he is presenting, but yes.
And we have the interface built in, included in that, that would interface with time clock plus.
That would be an additional cost?
Yes.
The time clock plus, yes.
Okay, can you provide that to us also?
No, because-
I don't, I don't reference that product, but I can have, you've talked to-
Yes, I've talked to Kevin several times.
That's a different company than Tyler.
Yeah.
But you have some basic costs on that, right?
It's going to be about $12,000 to $13,000 to get it started. Because we're going to have to buy the program, buy the licensing for it. Everybody except for Roden Bridge will be able to clock in on their computer. Roden Bridge will have a punch key. Anybody that's accessible to a computer can do that. And then what's going to happen, at a certain time, they're going to send it all to us and then we're going to send it to our system to-
And it automatically goes into your payroll system?
Does our payroll for us.
Reduces injury and chance for mistake.
So I'm not having to hunt down people for claim sheets for the sheriff's department.
Our, our hardware, our software, the things that mine can be able to carry everything, anything that has to update.
We're going to be doing some updates county-wide as far as switching to U-verse. Gina is working on getting all those price quotations and how many lines we'll have to do, et cetera, et cetera. But it's going to be mandatory from AT&amp;T that we upgrade the U-verse anyway, because they're trying to get everything all the fiber optic instead of cables. But even what we have right now would handle, the bandwidth there, it would handle it.
Did y'all mention bandwidth?
Even like Kurt said, our ABLE term is fixing to go away. I mean, we're only 12 counties in the state of Texas that have it right now and Victoria County, I've been talking to Sean Kennedy quite a lot there, yeah.
Yeah, Sean Kennedy, uh-huh.
He, they're, I guess, ready to go live, I think, in a couple of months?
Well, and that's, that brings up a point that I want to, I want to express. We have gone to, with, with the Inco system, we've gone to what we call an evergreen software policy. And what Victoria County is doing, they've been a customer since about 2000 and they brought, they bought our older product, which is called Envision, don't want to infuse y'all there. They bought a product in 2000, all we offered at that time was called Envision. They have just upgraded to this product I'm proposing for Karnes County, the Version 10 product, which is a new generation product. And they are not paying license fees, they are not paying data conversion, all they're paying is training. And so what Karnes County will be doing by buying Inco is that 15 years from now, 20 years from now, and 23rd or whatever, if Inco comes out with Inco Version 20 and it's a next generation product, you will have already paid, you will not pay license fees, data conversion, all you would pay is training, and that is a significant, significant savings. So the Commissioner's Court will be making an investment in the product that will last for many, many years. And I tell you one thing real quick, and I'll be quiet. We are not, I, I absolutely guarantee you, we're not the cheapest software out there. There are other companies that have cheaper software. We're absolutely not the most expensive. I think we are a, we have a 99% client retention rate because of two reasons, we are a good value and our support. I have 50 Texas County customers that I go around and visit and there are so many variables, you know, in each county that, you know, some people are happier than others. The one thing that's absolutely consistent is the support and we do get great compliments constantly, not our support. And your neighbors of the north, just a quick example, Wilson County, two years ago, in their district and county clerk's offices, they had this TS2 ABLE term software in those offices and they went out for bids and chose a cheaper product. And if you talk to the county judge there or those ladies, they are extremely unhappy. They would like to have back the, the older product that they had.
Can you build your modules up as you, you think you need or want, or they all move to?
It's modular, there's a core financial piece, there's a core financial piece that's the foundation, and that's your general ledger, your AP, budget prep, bank reconciliation, and general entry. And then after that, you design it as to however the county needs it.
Isn't that, that, I saw where it says in the tour?
Yeah, and there's some modules listed in there that are even for cities and things. We have city customers as well. So there's some, we have a fixed assets module and that's, yeah, that's what we're going to have for the county.
Another thing to notice on his information sheet is they have $40 million set aside to fund ongoing research and development, so this isn't going to be an antiquated product. They're always going to have updates, working with the times.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very proud to say, I mean, you know, I live in West Texas and we don't have, we've got a lot of tumbleweeds out there, but we've felt a good product out there. have, we've got a lot of tumbleweeds out there, but we've felt a good product out there. We had some help from the folks in our office in Dallas, but ENCODE version ten is the flagship financial product for Tyler. And we're going to continue spending millions of dollars developing it. It's not used just by ENCODE, it's used by our vision special one. We very much appreciate earning your business and we'll do everything we can to keep it. And if any of y'all have any questions, let me give you a card real quick. Don't hesitate to contact me.
Thank you.
You bet. And I'll get that proposal corrected and get the project accounting out of there and get that through the law.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Kirk.
All right. I appreciate you moving up. I'm sorry y'all had to listen to all this. Thank you.
Kirk.
Okay, come on.
We are going to move to number nine now, which is presentation discussions regarding emergency services by the United Volunteers. And we have volunteered to do this, so we're going to come forward.
Hi, trying to read out for everybody to follow along with what I'm, uh, I'm trying to do.
Thank you.
Most of you know me. My name's Becky Albert and I am one of the volunteers at Karnes County Ambulance. I wrote this up so that I could try to follow something to say with. I will read it and y'all can just follow along and please refer that. But now, the exhibits that I have, there's two exhibits there. That is for your information. That is where I got some of my information to back up to that. So that's just a proposal that, that I have in mind. Honorable Judge Sean Mitchum, I'm here today representing the Karnes County Ambulance Association. I want to, I want to thank you for the opportunity to put in our views on the present situation of the Karnes County EMS Ambulance Association. And in some way, hopefully, you can insight on what is necessary to move the program forward and assure the county a consistent and versatile EMS system. As we are all aware, the Karnes County EMS program has been in place for many years and has been managed by Johnny Spoon and men by volunteers that have been faithful and determined to give the citizens of Karnes County the very best emergency medical care they can possibly give, be given within a county with such a small population. The many hours of volunteer service provided medical care for seven hundred and fifty-eight calls in twenty-eleven, a thousand and fifty-four calls in twenty-twelve, and so far, we've responded to five hundred and ninety calls for twenty thirteen. Bottom line, the system has performed well over the years and the potential to continue performing well in future years. The primary focus for me being here today is to provide the commissioners' court with a path forward that will assure continued emergency medical care service for the county and to back the many volunteers that have worked tirelessly over the years to assure prompt medical care to our citizens. Since the retirement of Johnny last month, there have been issues that have jeopardized the EMS system. These issues have been a result of a lack of communication with most volunteers and a replacement of the administrator's position. Granted, there was an open session where opinions could have been, could have been provided, but only two of four commissioners were present at that time. I want to point out that the system needs a leader to get everyone to follow. Presently, that is not the case. Better communication with the EMS group could prevent this from occurring. This is jeopardizing the very existence of our volunteer organization. We all know that the commissioners' court has a full plate and certainly, we do not want to add more turmoil to anyone's life. But it is essential that we take action now to prevent the ultimate failure of our program. The ambulance volunteers do not want the program to fail and will assist any leader that is willing to commit to providing, to moving the program forward and to working with all the volunteers. I'm not sure if this is even practical under the present situation, since there is this respect and trust issue. Trust has been an issue since the present leader has refused to back up volunteers during some calls that are displayed in the handouts presented here, which is my exhibit A for your information. Turning our attention to the financials associated with the service, starting August one, twenty thirteen, the current administrator has increased the pay to attract more volunteers. However, a paid daytime service would cost an estimated six thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollars per week, including overtime for two full people hired. We're recommending that four full-time people, employees be hired. Cost of hiring Texas regional is fifteen thousand four hundred plus any billing associated with the call. Our understanding is the county is not entitled to any of the billing associated with these calls, so the fifteen thousand four hundred is totally out of taxpayers' pocket. And this is only based on a seven-day period. So this is a twelve-hour shift times the amount that they're being paid versus what it could cost if we had our own people at full time. You can do the math. This is totally not fair to the taxpayers. We cannot disagree that we need a daytime paid service, since volunteers mostly work their own jobs during the day. Hiring full-time Karnes County employees to manage the service weekly is pretty well established and a must and it still allows the volunteers to cover the evening and nighttime hours and does not choke them under the bus. We are specifically asking that you do not privatize the Karnes County EMS. If you, the commissioners, think it's necessary to privatize the system, then we ask you to let the people of Karnes, then we ask that you take it to the people and let Karnes County taxpayers decide. It is time to consider paying a higher salary to the directors, MT basics, MT intermediates, and paramedic levels in order to attract the individuals necessary for providing the designated healthcare available with our citizens. Recommendations are available on supply and documentation that I've provided. Now, that is just a proposal. That is nothing that's in concrete. That's just something to be a look at. Also, on that exhibit B is where that's listed, I listed currently what, Goliath County, because they're pretty much the only county around us that is a volunteer paid service. And that is what their director is getting. And that is the population of that county, how many square miles they service versus how many square miles we service. And then that is Goliath population. The Karnes County population that I put on there, that was off of the twenty-ten census that was online. I'm sure it's doubled that figure by now. There are professional EMS consultants available to assist with relamping the present systems. Names can be supplied. I have gone out, there are some people that, that's what they do. They're EMS consultants. They come in, they just work with you to get everything online. They do charge for it. There is a gentleman who is, and is very, very highly recommended if anyone's interested, interested in talking to him. I'm glad to give you his name and y'all can talk to him and make your own decisions as far as that goes. I do want to say thank you to the commissioners' court for the opportunity to provide you this information and hope that I can work with people to resolve the issues we presently have with Karnes County EMS program. So, those are the, yes.
Your number is six thousand one hundred and forty-eight per week?
Well, that's seven days. It's seven days, if twenty-four hours a day times seven days, which is a hundred and sixty-eight hours, then you have to take those hundred and sixty-eight hours and a medic works eight, uh, the, and then divide it down, two medics at eighty hours at regular base pay.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, how many people is this? Two, four?
That's two. Well, it could be four because you're taking eighty hours. Most of them are going to do forty, most, but you got two people at forty, which is eighty. And then I took the overtime. That was only if you had two people, my figure is only if you had two people doing a hundred and sixty-eight hours for seven days. That is what that figure is. And regular time and overtime.
So you're paying overtime?
Yes, regular time and overtime. And overtime is, based on the figures that I proposed. That doesn't mean that's the figures. It's just how I came up with my figure. But what I, yeah, I just took the twenty-four hours a day because with EMS, we don't work five hours, eight hours. It's a twenty-four hour day, seven day a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So when I figured seven days to come up with the cost of the, to compare it to the fifteen thousand, I, that's how I got it. Because I took eighty hours at regular time, which is two people, and then eighty-eight hours at time and a half. Times seven. So, that's just, we, we're asking that y'all give us a chance, the volunteers that have been here, we're asking that y'all give us a chance to continue this. I know there's work to be done ahead. I know that the ambulance, the first county manager shouldn't be running as a business, because that's what it is. It is a business. Although there may, I don't look, because I wasn't appointed to do any of the funding and stuff, but I, I do know there is money to be brought in if it's managed in the business manner that it needs to be managed in. There's lots of things that can be done to help, help increase that income to offset the, the pain of employees. So, you know, we're all willing to try to keep it local and keep it, but we, we're going to have to have some full-time people. And we're just asking you not to go out and privatize and take it away from the people that have been for so long, doing so much. And we still want to continue that. And we want good people in here doing what, what it is we do to save lives.
Becky, I have some questions for you. Number one, I know, I mean, I've heard that most of the EMS personnel are out there. And I know we've had some billing issues. Are those straight yet, or are we?
We have not completed the application yet. There have been some few bumps as far as getting connected with all of the entities that are involved because of trying to do it online. I'm supposed to coordinate with Sam Lady to do some type of application online with Ficus. Not real sure what that has to do with anything, because I haven't talked to him recently. But we are in the process of getting all that straightened out.
How much money would that be, or what?
That were out, oh, well over two hundred thousand.
And when did that happen?
It started in March of two thousand twelve, I believe, is when the ball was dropped by getting the licensing with, at that time, it was Trailblazer, but it was a switch sense for Medicare and Medicaid.
I guess the reason I'm asking, it was never brought to my attention until the EMS personnel started talking to me. And so.
Well, every time I talked to the prior administrator about it, he would encourage me to leave it alone. He was working with Trailblazer or whatever the new system is to get it rectified.
That's a lot of money.
It is.
I think that's something that we should be notified of. Something doesn't come through to keep us posted, because we need to know. We need to do something to see what's going on here.
My understanding on that issue, and I, I'm not trying to get into what they knew, but I, I did some checking and supposedly, back in two thousand twelve, Medicare changed their licensing. So, when they changed their licensing, they asked all entities that had at least a ten-year license, where they had been remunerated ten years, to submit a new licenses. Because they changed, I think they carried their, changed their periods. And from what information I've been able to find out, this was not done. So therefore, you have to start all over with your new licensing in order to be able to collect the Medicare, Medicare, Medicare. And so as of today, you're still not collecting Medicare, because no matter how much we bill, you're not collecting it because that license was not done. And there is a timeline on collecting back Medicare. And there's the possibility that we'd be too late for that. But that is something that, that revenue is there and it should be put in your figures whenever y'all, you know, when you look at EMS, that's part of the income that we bring in. But if you're not collecting it, you don't see it. So, y'all don't really have a good general picture of how much income can be brought in, because you don't know those people.
I agree with what you're saying, but EMS by the county is not supposed to be a generated income for the county. It serves to provide to the people.
Yeah, but.
I understand that, but I'm saying, we're not in a business to, to revenue, yeah, you want to pay for your services to use, but, but then again, it's like sometimes you have to eat, you end up having to eat some of those services.
You do.
Because we're, we're not in the, we're not in the private business of, of earning money that way.
Right. I'm only talking about what the county should be collecting when we pick somebody up.
Oh, I agree with that, yes.
Whether it's private or whether it's Medicare. I'm not, that's what I'm saying. If you pick somebody up, we've got to bill them. And so we need to collect that. And that's part of the whole picture that you guys look at when you're looking at increasing funds to, to, to provide full-time personnel. If the money's not there seen to come in, not so much to offset it, but there is money there that backs up what we're doing. It just needs to be, there are other things that could be done as well within the system to, for instance, our billing is way behind the eight ball on charges for what we bill when we go out compared to other companies. Way below. That could be looked at. I don't know the ins and outs of how to go, who approves that, but that could be. And I'm not saying just jumping up there with, with everybody else, but I know we're way, way down on that. I've worked with other companies that also have done different things as far as setting a fee for, say, seventy-five dollars for no transport. You go out in the middle of the night and they really don't just want you to check them out and you don't send them anywhere and you don't want to send them a bill for whatever the billing charge is. And you just send them a flat seventy-five dollar fee. At least you paid for your two medics walking out and they're full. Those are things that can be looked at, can be added. Of course, that's up to the director that, when a director's hired. And we're asking that y'all hire a director rather than privatizing now. That's what we're asking as a consideration. That we want to try to keep this and make it the business that it needs to be.
While we're here, I know Danny's not here, but this is something else that is included in the package. There's some concerns, exhibit A, and we're just reading this as we're going along. I know I've received phone calls from four or five of the EMTs regarding our appointment. I want Danny to be here and discuss this, but I know that some of you have told me from the association that one of the big problems is, is there's, I guess, a history of not getting along or something in which Danny at one time was with y'all, had left, and he was not voted back into the association and it's created a problem right now. I don't know if that's something that is.
The only thing I can say on that is, what, what went on prior to me coming on board in twenty-ten, I, I don't know. But I do know, last year, I believe it was, he did come back and fill out an application and he did ask to become a member, because we have our association that we, we look at their applications and we vote whether to have them come on board or not come on board. He did submit an application. It was brought to our business meeting and he was declined. And it was a vote. It's a vote between all members. It had something to do with, and I can't speak for what happened in the past because we don't have those issues, you know, that I, I didn't have to do with him. At that time, I can just tell you that as a group, he was voted down unanimously.
I know I've been driving James all day crazy about all these concerns that, you know, I keep getting. So that's when the letter was written, whatever it was going to be a letter. I said, y'all need to come in here and discuss it like openly with everybody.
And again, I'm not here to point fingers. All I'm here is to ask for y'all to consider not privatizing the service and letting us be able to continue giving the service that we're doing. But on the other hand, there are some things that have to change. And more audience change. We've had change since, actually, June one, whenever Johnny was out. Because June one to June thirty, we didn't see him and no communication whatsoever. And it was up to us that were there to make sure every day that, that things went. So change is not, we're not against change at all. We welcome change. But on the other hand, the members that are there also want to still be the members and, and be able to work with the members that we, or that you hired as your, and, and I'm sure you'll have criteria that you go by, but that's all we're asking is to get us somebody that we can work with and continue to provide the services that we have. And that person, in our opinion, I don't know how the commissioners are going to look at it, but, you know, when Johnny was there, Johnny did get on the truck. That was part of his job, you know, at least that's what he told us, that that was part of his job as administrator when we were shorthanded. If there was only one person signed up, he got on the truck and he, he was on that. Now, if you hire one and, and he's dealing just to be the director and only do the administrative part of it, you know, we're going to have to have the people to manage the truck. With that person being able to do that as well, that cuts down on another person. Or the availability of someone not showing up or being shorthanded. That's all I can try.
Did any EMS have issues?
Okay. If we're getting more satisfied, do you think we need to hire two people to manage here today, or four people?
The reason I say four is because if you hire two, two people putting in a whole, you know, if they just come in to do twelve-hour shifts, seven days a week, you know, that you need to be able to split it up. Or they, you know, because EMS works a different kind of deal. They usually do forty-eight on and so many off and they rotate it back and forth. So with four people, you can have the two people and you're going to be flip-flopping on back and forth, but it, but it would still be covered. And if you hired two people and their job was to be on their everyday twelve-hour shifts or whatever, what if they get sick? What if their car breaks down? What if their kids? I mean, there's lots of things, whatever, if, if, then you don't have anyone. So at least if you have four, those other two would be available, should someone call them sick. Or even our volunteers can continue to take the place of, of those people during the day if that, so it could just, the way. And we're only talking about, at this point, I mean, however y'all decide to do it, going paid is difficult, definitely, and it sets me, the, in my notes, I showed just a daytime crew, with our volunteers still working at night. But they could certainly go pay for the whole twenty-four hours, depending on, on what y'all, what that director came up with in budget, if y'all could.
What an association have y'all been talking about, Becky, is half-paid, half-volunteer? Is our child getting back and forth right now? Is paid during the day?
Pretty much. That's what we've been looking at. For the ones that I have talked to, that have talked to me, none of us are opposed to the whole twenty-four hour thing. Go on completely paid. But right now, based on what I did and with, with my presentation here, it's just a daytime. Because our daytime is where our weaknesses. Because I myself have two other jobs. Stephen has a full-time job. Shelby's, he puts in two, but he's, he's got the commissioner's name on. Casey has a full-time job. Scott has a full-time job. You know, a lot of them have full-time jobs. So, to still be, for these people that have their full-time jobs, to still be able to participate, still help the volunteer at night is, is what we've kind of talked to. And that is going to come August one, first that y'all are aware of that, they increased that already, so on August one, on, on the volunteer side, for the twelve-hour shift.
I haven't seen those increases, have y'all?
Huh?
I haven't seen those increases, have y'all?
No.
Well, it was posted on our board that it was supposed to go on August first.
I don't, I haven't heard anything about that until you said it.
All I know is we have.
Why do you have a [inaudible]?
Shelby, I know, I don't know.
Danny, can I ask you a question, just while you're doing my capital letter? You're looking at sixty-one forty-eight a week.
That's. Seven days.
Seven days.
Seven days.
Okay.
Over time and...
That's all it is? So if you double that, you'd be allowed at twelve-three a week for full-time, why?
Well, you're still going to have, no, because those two people that I have figured there, that's for doing the whole hundred and sixty-eight hours, which is, that's only based on two people. So if you split it up, you're still going to be sixty-one, it's just going to be two of this, two of that. Do you see what I'm saying?
Another thing the court needs to consider when I talk to IRS about this, volunteers will not be able to be paid on a contract basis anymore. They will have to be employees. We can't have two separate things doing the same thing. Which therefore is not only going to be wages, it's going to be Social Security and Medicare, and it's going to be retirement.
Okay.
So we're looking at some costs involved.
We might have to sit down and put the numbers together on it and figure it out, but...
Well, it's going to have to be done for the budget.
Well, but I still see what they're saying. I don't, I don't think we should give it up to some company.
Oh, I don't think so either. I'm just saying, these are costs that you have to realize are going to be incurred.
All right. The other question is, we need to hire an administrator. Okay, our administrator, we have to specifically state what that administrator will be on standby at Johnnywood or whether it will just be administrator and just take certain object time.
It's going to make a difference, you know, if your administrator, like I said, if all he does is just administrate and he doesn't get on the truck, then that could, he could still have a problem or issue if somebody not showing up and nobody being on the truck that day. But if he's willing to, you know, if we, if everything was as it was now, you know, I mean, that's going to be a decision that y'all are going to have to make and, I guess, that administrator would have to make. But in our past, that's the way it worked. He pulled his weight with us as well as anything else and he covered the shift so we didn't have to go out with anybody else. That's the whole thing, is to keep a man, somebody else, to keep it in house. He picked that where it was short.
Well, and Johnny worked next door to the EMS building and him and Norma took call like all the time during the day. And every time you see the EMS go off, you know, you're like...
Him and Norma, not the one.
What did I say, the one? Well, the one, I just wanted to point that to you.
Shh, give me another job!
I didn't see you!
We were never on the same shift, Becky.
I thought you said the one on top.
I mean, if you're asking as far as our standpoint, yes, we would like to see that. We would like to see him. If you're asking as far as association, yes, we would like to see that. But again, that's going to be part of, however you go about hiring.
Ideally, with, you know, with two, if you have two paid time people, this is my opinion, if you have two paid time, two daytime people or four paid people on daytime, even at night, you got to work at forty-eight, working four-twelves, and then it'd be a rotating schedule where everybody, you know, get their weekends and stuff like that. But the county is going to have to understand that in order to make this work, you are going to have to pay. Comp time will not cut it because you will not be able to get any wage income for comp time. A medic, a paramedic is saying, working for a private company, and those that pay at least fifteen, sixteen dollars an hour, or in the paper I've seen advertised, fifty-three thousand dollars a year.
Can we figure out something, Becky, for budget time? To the numbers that you're at right now, can y'all get together and figure out something?
I'm sure we can. I mean, we weren't asked to do that, you know, I, we did this on our own to, you know, come up to give you an idea of a comparison, but if you're asking me to, then yes, I will work something out for you.
I mean, will y'all help her? They're shaking their heads.
Four of them saying yes. And I know, and I know there's some others too.
You know, a medic, some places get fifteen dollars an hour, some get sixteen, nineteen, it depends, you know, you have to look. You know, at the Saturday survey, at the time, I think Dr. Worthy was supposed to live with a paramedic, he was basically, that was, I put that in there just in case it would ever come to this.
And again, those are just, those are just figures that I put there. I didn't come here prepared to do any kind of budget or...
I understand that. And you know what? This is something that, I know y'all in association, and you put your heads together and all figure it out and get it ready by budget time.
Which is when?
Yesterday.
Well, already, I can tell you.
ASAP.
Well, Wana, you have to provide it if possible, whatever, but you'll take care of the fact that...
Yeah, right. If they'll just give me cost of staffing, then I can handle it.
Is that how we would break it down, Wana, and then you could figure it all out for us?
Right. And then we'll have to, you'll need to designate for me how many positions will be full-time and how many will be contract, volunteer, whatever.
Okay, so do you want me to do it? Well, I'll do it both ways. I'll do straight, full-time, around the clock, and then I'll break it the way that my proposal was here. And then you can see how it fits with the counties.
Well, and then, the reason I'm saying we have to have it between the volunteers and the true full-timers is because we also provide the health insurance.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Yes, we understand that that's an issue. I just wasn't real sure on the pay versus the volunteer amount, you know, because I didn't, I just got into this just not too long ago.
Well, Wana, let me give you Jeff Finks' number.
Okay.
He's the administrator in Kitten County. They run four units or two, they run four units, but they have paid time. And he do the labor laws, IRS, that he can't, they have a, what they do theirs with the overtime and everything, it's like, he tried explaining to me one day, but he's, they're, Kitten County, they've got comfort in burning their staff, so they have a system where they have it in place. It's county paid.
William, did you just get your current...
Steven, Steven, I'm sorry. Steven's our new paramedic, he just got by for two days and that's...
Yay! Is there any, is there anybody else with your EMS people, EMS people?
Thank y'all so much for listening.
Scott, you got anything you want to say? Cole? Casey?
I'm speaking for Danny.
So, Steven, I'm sorry, I apologize, but I know who you are. Okay, so, let's go ahead and move to number ten, let me all the EMS personnel out of here. We have to go in case, we noticed we lost them right away. Steven and Gretchen, I guess, were on the call this morning?
Yes.
I saw them come in, I heard a beep beep and I saw them go. Good morning, Casey.
Good morning, everybody. I was asked by Danny Dixon to come up here and just speak. He was requested through our request for proposals for Carnes County Emergency Services, Emergency Medical Services. Just upfront, I have not seen, this is today is the first day I've seen this, I just got a brief chance to read through this real quick. My personal opinion is like, I'm behind Becky and everybody else here. Keep Carnes County EMS, Carnes County EMS, don't let a private contract service come in here. But I was requested just to answer any questions regarding this RFP that he was written, that he wrote for y'all. Just going through it, did he provide copies to y'all?
I gave Paul copies.
Okay. Just going through, it's just, it's, thank you, what he recommended is a two-year contract from starting October 1 of this year until, it would be two years, it would be September 29th of midnight, 2015. It's pretty strict when I go, did it give you a geographic layout of Carnes County? What, how many calls?
You know what, did I can say on the chance, we say, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that, Casey.
No, no problem. It just kind of lays out pretty much everything that the contract service is going to require to fulfill within the two-year period. One thing I do want to point out is on the section C, on the contract dysfunctional responsibilities, there's a highlighted section, or actually just some few points here. The one thing that any one of me to specify on is, the one that you see highlighted there, it says, "The contract service shall provide a furnished $1 million performance bond payable to Carnes County to ensure against poor contractor performance or interruption of any, for interruption of service for any reason." That keeps us protected for some instance, there are fully in response time requirements that are written here, which are four minutes within Carnes City, four minutes within Kennedy, and I believe Flores within Falls City and Runge and anything like Gillette or outline areas would be, I think, twenty minutes. And there's two different suggestions that Danny put in here for a contractor to be able to, I guess, say, choose. Option one would be putting two ambulances, one in Carnes City, one in Kennedy. Option B would be a centralized location between both cities and the response times would be, was up to, I believe, six minutes. So there's a lot of information provided in here and I don't want to go detail by detail because honestly, I haven't read through it in detail before, I haven't had the opportunity to do that. But like I said, Danny's put a lot of time into this just to cover us if, I mean, since y'all do, who can choose to go private contract to that one. Again, my personal opinion, I don't think it needs to happen, but this is written up for a specific purpose. It gives you a lot of control as to certain things they're going to have to meet and require to do in order to get the service, to keep their contract alive, to keep them here in Carnes County. So, any questions? Like I said, I don't have a lot of information on this. I was here, I was sent here to answer any questions. He does have a, in section D, he has a schedule of proposed events as far as when things were going to effect. That is also, you can probably see highlighted on there, but again, I guess, I don't think this needs, I don't think Carnes County needs to resort to a private contractor service. I think we can make things work. Like Becky said, we were for a whole entire month of June, we've kind of just left out the drive, say, hey, just do what you have to do to keep it running. And we've done a lot of things done, like our license is renewed. I know Danny said he hadn't, he claims he's been working on a Medicare bigger work, I don't, that's not my thing. I don't know, as far as doing Medicare, so I don't know as far as that goes. But any questions as far as the RFP goes?
Casey, have you looked at it to know whether or not, Danny had mentioned to me that privatized company would keep all revenues from billing.
Correct.
Exactly.
Yes. All, as far as Carnes County, as far as y'all's concern is, what y'all would do is, get all these bits together, pick the most appropriate service for Carnes County. Okay, you're going to bring them up here, you're going to say, you're going to be required to do these certain things. Then you're going to write them a check for X amount of money, whatever they fit you, for a two-year period. That's it. You don't see revenue, you don't see anything. You have no control besides it's an RFP as far as response times and certain things. They hired their own people, you have no say, so they have their own medical director, like Mike said, be a medical director from San Antonio, it could be Houston, it could be out of state somewhere. You know, it's kind of a wishy-washy thing when it comes to that. And you will, Carnes County will not see any revenue when it comes to billing.
Carnes County, you missed, past the thing, Wana, you can, you should make attention, you know, but we used to make not exactly back revenue budget, but we were close to budget, so actually...
We were close to covering costs.
Close to covering, it was almost like a break even, even.
But this will be money that would be expended by the tax, no recovery whatsoever.
Just assurance that you have two nine-one ambulances available at all times, but it comes to price, of course. Any other questions?
And you know, I think, this is just my opinion, but if we have our medics in here and we have our trauma nurse and everybody else on this, it, you know, it can work. I think it can work. I don't really want to, I don't want to do this whole privatizing, like Wana said, it's going to cost us a fortune and lose total...
We lose total control.
And I think so.
Well, and sometimes your local responders are much more compassionate to situations that happen with people they might walk down the street and meet, than some outsider from Timbuctoo.
Right.
I know everybody that's here, we've all had cases, you know, that when you walk up to somebody, it's hard for someone, you gotta tell them, I'm glad you're here, or I'm glad you're on. That means a lot to a lot. But, you know, when all this first started, I always said I wanted Carnes County people taking care of Carnes County. You know, Scott, he made the comment that, you know, the most important focus we had to look at to provide EMS services to the county, to the residents of the county, and that was, that should be our primary focus. But, you know, with the times changing and the way everything is going, these days where we're growing, you know, we have to step up to the time. And stepping up to the time is that, you know, Auto Kaiser is increasing their services and their talents, and the same thing with us, we need to expand our services to meet the growing needs.
I think we need to do that, but I think it needs to be our people. We can pay our own service. We don't need to go hire a sun contractor to come in here and sell Carnes County. These guys have taken care of us for forty years, I think they could, I think they could do another forty.
Forty, Tracy?
I don't think, just one more.
And that's today, it's our birthday, Casey.
Thank you.
And, and Gretchen, that it for how long? I know it's the early eighties, but...
As a whole, I think we, Carnes County EMS has done an excellent job of providing care to people. Yes, we've had some bumps in the road, and I want to thank Texas Freedom, especially this a few days ago, perfect example in Runge. Collaboration with Fire Department, TMS, Carnes County is doing a very good job as compared to other entities elsewhere. I love working, I really do, but I think it's just we need to actually sit down, Becky would be a fine candidate to do it, we all just need to sit down together, those members together, say, okay, for a twenty-four hour, seven-day-a-week paid service and the full-time day staff with volunteers at night, both ways, wherever y'all see fit, you can choose which option you want to go to, but I think this order needs to happen.
And you know, that being said is that, there are going to be times when all the resources are tasked, everything you have is going to just pull out the play and you still don't have enough to play with. And that happened the other day. So, no, it's, we need to continue what we're doing. I know like last week, I did about ninety-six hours myself, me benching, working, reaching for everything, trying to cut some costs, and it takes a lot of the after work. I'm getting old. I'm still too old.
Well, I stay on number ten, let's take no action, let's allow, let's allow our guys to do it together. That's my thoughts. Do y'all have any other thoughts? Casey, you think Becky's capable?
Oh, yeah.
Look at Becky, look at her.
She's my EMS mom.
She'll watch the sheets.
You guys do an awesome job. Thank you all. Thank you to all of y'all, mine, EMS, all of you, thank you. Uh, we just take no action. Everybody okay by the way? Anybody have, any other questions? James, Tracy? Okay, number six. Mr. Dewey, hello, Mr. Dewey. Good morning. It's a presentation in action in regard to a contract presented by Clyde Dewey with Gulf Coast Utilities, where you're doing the audit reconciliation recovery audit. If you look in your package, there's a thin stain on the sofa. You guys be careful, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Mr. Dewey, explain this better to you. He came in and talked to me, and in your little package, it tells you everybody he works for and everything he does. So go, Mr. Dewey, whenever you're ready.
Thank you for this time. We provide utility companies, we work for governmental, educational, religious organizations, I don't think that there's a whole separate set of rules for those in the utility. We formed this company in ninety-four after I worked twenty years for some utility companies. And we work strictly on attendance and feedbacks. You don't find any money, you don't listen to any... What we do is we look for regulatory open charges made by the utility companies. When I say utility, I mean water, electric, telephone, natural gas, and that. What we do is this, the auditor may appreciate this, we work from just one company per one month for each account we have with each vendor. We get the balance of what we need from the utility themselves. We get background billing history up to forty years back. We get any reports the utilities make about to help us break down some of the lump sums. Our job and our goal is to supplement the efforts by the authorities themselves, and they're in there trying to do their day-to-day work and make sure that they pay the lowest fuel for the service, the most active. And we support that. We come from a regulatory tax. We're not looking to see a, your auditor making sure that they apply last month payment. We work with Texas Public Utility Regulatory Act, state control rules, government, they send that. And if you're, if you're not, very few, I can't name one client in the next ten years that was familiar with how Texas Public Utility Regulatory Act applies there. No one has time for people that are busy with day-to-day things. Mostly what I hear is that the bill is about the same amount it was last month, if it's about the same amount it was last year, it may be wrong. And they move on to the next tax. When we identify these... Uh, when we identify these overcharges, we pretty much know what rocks, what doesn't. Uh, we contact, say, the auditor and say, hey, we found a mistake on this electric bill, there's a mistake on this telephone. At that point in time, she has the prerogative to say, act on this week, that alone. Uh, we write our contract that way, uh, to keep control of your customers and your downtime. I know for a fact you're going to want to know that. Uh, whenever, we get the okay from the auditor generally, uh, we contact the utility. We're not going to fight with them, we're not going to argue with them. Some of them we've been working with for 15, 16 years. We say, hey, we have a client, this is what we found, we think we have a problem, and you go, thank you, I'm writing. Uh, we get you an actual refund check for a minimum of four years' max. Uh, there are some overcharges that we find are terrible. In fact, we just collected $20,000 a month for Brooks County, you know, just a few weeks ago. Uh, we can go back to the inception, is what I was going to say, that's the problem. There's really no downside to this. Worst possible case, if you have this time involved, the time to protect me, the auditor, make that copy of one month's bill, and you didn't get any money back, in that case, the auditor assumed you took her for lunch. That's what they were having. Now, we find money to submit, again, every time. Uh, when we find a mistake, if your accounts payable department is interested in knowing where to look for it, how we found it, what it looks like, uh, you don't have a problem showing it, because we're going to come back in four to five years and ask for your business again, and you will let it change. Some of the, some of the rules will change, some of the tariffs will change, some of the people will change, and maybe we can change them. Uh, so that, that's how we, uh, what questions you got.
We went through a telephone audit probably five years ago or so, and there were some cost recoveries.
May I ask who did that?
Out of Bernie.
Carol and Norma.
There you go.
You heard, you heard really well. That's disappointing. You just cut my potential.
We, we have put in some new phone lines since then, and we have had billing issues that we've been working with ATD.
And I heard you talk about, also, I heard you talk about some upcoming changes. Uh, the, you know, whenever we got about five years into, into this business, we went back and took a look at where do we make our money? Uh, it's in an environment of news, ads, purchasing. That's where utility makes this stuff. It's virtually impossible, or I haven't seen it, where a customer can do something and create an overcharge. Yeah, that's what I'm about to, it's the utility company. I might say, I know that might be stretching, but that doesn't afford to compare.
So what this would be, Mr. Dewey, and we explain it, is the overages that you find, the information that you give to Luanne, anything that you find, if you're concerned about any of these things-
I apologize. Thanks for adding the contract paragraph to the split, any recovery. Y'all keep all, y'all keep having, y'all keep keeping savings for paying the lawyer or anything, you know.
We don't have anything delivered.
That's right. And, uh, I know you were asking, James, her, like, gave her the copy, you looked at it, and you thought it was okay. You stepped her somewhere. So if y'all, if y'all want to do it, I just need-
I'm going to, uh, go ahead, I need to, I need to accept the proposal submitted, stated in the general address text.
Thank you.
Our second?
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Uh, motion carries five zero. I got one question for you, five. Can you look at something? What do we need to, or, Luanne, how would, how do you usually put this in here? So this contract is to include the following locations.
In the case of this many locations, I would say all.
All Carnes County offices, Luanne?
Yeah, all county, all, uh-
All county properties.
All county properties, all county-
Because we still have just yards, not necessarily all offices.
All county properties, areas?
All county properties.
Okay, let me do both of these for you, I can't read this.
You know, I hated being behind those other two presentations. They loaded your waggles.
Yes.
Uh, I don't mind coming back and making the copies for you to read them.
Okay, okay. I'll get Gina to email them to you.
Oh, thank you.